Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for August 16th, 2022. I call this meeting to order and ask that the courts please again call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Sawansky?
Present.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is under building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have two items on our agenda tonight. The first one being the Bannerman's site plan and special use permit. The petitioner is requesting a site plan review for a proposed 10,000 square foot restaurant and bar with an outdoor seating and recreational area on 8.1 acres on the south side of Hart Circle in Brewster Creek Business Park. The petitioner is also requesting a special use permit to allow restaurants serving liquor and indoor and outdoor live entertainment. Outdoor entertainment would take place on stage located to the northwest of the proposed building. The petitioner has agreed to rotate the stage five degrees clockwise and saw a sound wall on the east side of the stage and limit the decibel level as measured at the mixing station to 92 decibels. The Planning and Zoning Commission held the required public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval at their meeting on August 4th, 2022. Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Stone?
I'm here if you have any questions as well as the petitioner.
Is there any questions from the committee?
I do have one quick question. I know in the previous meeting we talked, have you guys addressed like outdoor smoking areas in the seating area?
I will let Mac, the petitioner, we have had discussions on this.
Okay.
I'll let him clarify.
So yes, we have a dedicated smoking area to the south side of the building by the bocce ball and the bags area. So it'll be away from the outdoor seating area where people are sitting. It'll be on the side side away from everybody else.
Would the outdoor events be like through October and then begin like?
Depending on the weather, but the goal is to be through October, correct? We might stop it in September from a music perspective, but continue to use the outdoor dining area through October with heaters and stuff like that.
I have a question, Anna. I have a question for you also. If this is approved this evening, what is the timeframe as far as construction?
We're hoping to start once everything's approved sometime in September.
And how long do you think it'd take for the build out?
Nine months is what the construction company has told us. Hopefully, the weather cooperates throughout the winter months, but our goal is to be ready either in May or June of next year.
I think the Planning and Zoning Commission had a concern about the loading and the unloading on the trucks. Do you feel that you have that sufficiently worked out for safety?
Yeah, so we widened the area on the dock side where the trucks are coming in. Additionally, as I mentioned the last meeting, most of our deliveries are done early in the morning. So if need be, they can park in the main parking lot and deliver through the front door. But we have enough space through the employee area where they can deliver their stuff if need be. Additionally, if they have to, they can still park on the street by the employee area and deliver through there as well, but I don't anticipate that to be an issue.
See, where's the employee area, Anna?
Employee area is on the north side of the building. So it has its own private curb cut?
Thank you.
What is the, I didn't see the exact, I know you say you have a six-foot aluminum rail fence. I'm not sure by the plans where that goes. Does it go all the way around the whole perimeter?
Let me have our architect, John, talk a little bit about that as well, okay? Both about the employee entrance area and fencing as well.
Okay.
I'd just add a few comments regarding the parking that's in the rear of the building. Concern was about truck maneuvering in that space. So what would be done is basically created a area in that section. We've moved the refuge area back to create a hammerhead so the trucks can pull in and back up into that area where the car parking is. And then they're allowed to basically pull off and out of the site with a forward approach. So by creating a hammerhead in that area, so we moved that whole area back to the southwest, which created that maneuvering space for the trucks. As far as the other question you had, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I was a little foggy as to is the fence completely around the entire perimeter of the whole place?
Okay, if you start from the corner where you can see the stage there, the exterior stage, from the building face, that's a solid fence that runs all the way to the property line, and then it runs to the southwest, that's a solid fence. A six-foot high fence. It prevents people from parking on the street and trying to listen to the concert, as well as people parking in the adjacent lot.
Well, plus, I would imagine you're going to charge for some concerts, right? So you don't want people walking in. That was why I was wondering.
Right.
There's no way they can walk in there. The front, like on the road, it's a fence, a sheath fence, so people can see that they're driving, they can see the pace, they can see outdoor seating area and all that.
What kind of fence is that going to be?
That would be another six-foot high fence, but it's aluminum picket fence.
Okay, so not chain link?
It's not chain.
Okay, good.
And that will allow a nicer view to the pond.
I know it said it in here, but I just wasn't sure exactly where. Okay, so then that goes all the way around to the other side?
Exactly. That line that you're pointing at right now basically is the fence line.
Okay. So what is the ballpark looking thing there?
This is the stage.
I know, but what are the lines coming out?
That area is just an allocation of possible seating.
Or seating, where grass seating and stuff?
Yeah, related to the rest of the site.
All of the rest of the area is going to be all grass?
Yes.
Okay. And there's not going to be any type of a platform or anything in front of the stage? It'll all just be grass?
Yes.
Okay, because that, in rainy times, I could see that being really problematic.
Rainy times, obviously, we won't have it outside either.
Yes, some type of a front platform or something.
So depending on the weather, we might have to move it inside.
Okay.
Have it when it's raining outside, because we'll have a stage inside as well. And the goal would be for nicer weather outside, but if we know it's going to rain, we certainly will bring it inside.
Is the stage permanent, Mac? The stage itself, is it permanent?
Yes, it'll be permanent.
And is there an overhang?
Yes.
Good to know.
I have some follow-up questions to the fence. So I'm assuming staff has looked at the exit hardware and the way it's, you know, people can exit that. When that gets crowded, do you feel that there's enough exits should there be some sort of unfortunate emergency? And what type of hardware and devices are you using to prevent people from coming in but be able to get out in a quick manner? Because it seems like that can be filled with hundreds of people, and if they're rushing to get out and there's no exit to Munger Road or to the auxiliary roads, you're forcing them back around the building the way that's drawn. Is there a need for an exit at the back?
Back of the site backs up to a detention area, so we don't necessarily want to direct people into water. They did add, so there's a gate north of the dumpsters, there's a gate directly by the stage, there's two gates on the east side of the building, as well as access through the building to exit. So all the hardware would be to exit out in an emergency situation.
Blocked from the outside, but push panic cars to get out.
Correct.
So if I read this correctly, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
You'll have a patio, like a deck, and then a patio below that? Is that what you're looking for? There we go, there we go. Okay, yeah. We didn't have those in our packet.
No, we didn't.
Christie, what's wrong?
[laughing]
Oh, now, okay. Wow, yeah, that makes it look a little different. That's not what I was picturing on my little stick figure.
When this comes back before us for a vote, could we have the designated smoking areas highlighted in red with the dimensions of those areas?
Sure.
Be part of the site plan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, that makes sense to me now.
I just want to add, overall, I think it looks awesome and having, do people have live music outside will be fun.
You know, we're excited about it, but we're still a long ways away, so I'm not getting too excited yet.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a nice area for everyone in Bartlett to come and enjoy the weather and nice music.
Yeah, it's better than driving 50 miles, or 50 miles, 50 minutes, about an hour to Revania like I just had to do. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. That'd be great. Thanks, Mac.
You did a great job, really.
Certainly did.
We should have asked, and the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission, they did a great job with the questions that they asked. I read that in depth, and, you know, we just had a few questions up here that weren't answered by the Planning and Zoning Committee, but they did an outstanding job also. Good effort on everyone's part.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how many square feet do you have over there now?
At current Bannerman's, we have 12,500.
It'll be a little smaller inside, but you'll have the outside.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
So we'll send this on to the Village Board for a vote.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Looks really great. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Next item on our agenda is the amendment, amending the municipal code Title 10, zoning ordinance, the cannabis dispensing centers. As discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on March 15th, 2022, it was a summary of the proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the adult use and medical cannabis dispensary centers. A, the thousand-foot distance requirement would be removed from the definition. Said use would be allowed as a special use in the B2, B3, and B4 community shopping zoning districts. B, said use would be prohibited in the downtown overlay district, including the Bartlett Town Center, Main Street Plaza, and Streets of Bartlett. And D, the findings of fact for a special use permit would be updated to delete the distance requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposed text amendment, conducted the required public hearing at their meeting on July 7th, 2022. During their discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commissioners did not object to allowing dispensaries as a special use in the downtown overlay district. However, they deemed that the matter of policy to be determined by the Village Board. The P&amp;Z Commission recommended approval of the text amendments as written and requested the Village Board review the P&amp;Z discussions regarding the dispensaries in the downtown overlay district. With that, do you have any comments?
I know there was some possible confusion over what exactly the downtown overlay district entailed. So there are some zoning districts, for example, Main Street Plaza, where the Harris Bank is located, that is zoned B3. However, because it's in the downtown overlay district, which is outlined in yellow, what was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission was that it also be prohibited because of the downtown overlay district. So that was what the initial discussion was before the committee. Planning and zoning wasn't quite as concerned about it. They felt that the special use findings of fact gave the board and the commission oversight, but felt it was a policy decision for the Village Board.
Any questions from the committee?
Yeah. Do we think that being a complete overlay of the downtown district, it's a little overly restrictive?
That's what I felt when I first read the packet, and I took a look at the overlay district. I remember when we formed that, and, you know, it's been a while, and when I looked at it, I couldn't believe how much of an area it actually encompassed. And I wanted to hear some more discussions from the other trustees about that, but that's a rather large area to restrict it. I like the idea of the text amendments that we have, but I think some considerations should be given. And I love the idea of it being a special use, but I think that, you know, to restrict it in total is a little extreme.
I'd agree.
Yeah. I know we had some discussions about traffic, but, you know, I never did agree with the situation with the traffic that we're talking about in downtown area. I don't think that's going to be an issue at all.
I have a concern about that.
How many cars a day are we talking about? How many cars a day? I think it's 500, 600 cars a day? You can answer from back there if you want.
[inaudible]
Yeah.
I think it could be highly variable as to what you'd see.
We have the data now. You've got every place in the country has them, so.
I think we'd expect about between 200 and 400 customers a day.
400 cars a day.
Customers, yes. Probably less in terms of cars overall.
And how long are they there?
You know, they can be there with pre-order as short as three minutes in our stores. If they need advice, and in particular if they need medical advice, it can take as long as 10 minutes. We like to cut it in between at seven minutes, and as time goes on, customers become more savvy. They learn to sort of know what they're looking for. So that time gets cut down dramatically.
What are your hours of operation?
Oh, you know, our stores are usually nine to nine, but it kind of depends on the area and what they allow as well. We would like to have a wide set of open hours just to accommodate elderly as well as people that work late and things like that.
What makes this across the street more desirable of a location than like a higher traffic, like a 59 or 20?
Well, we initially thought the Bartlett Town Center was the perfect spot for it because of its proximity to the Metro and with having the police station right in Village Hall right across the street, you know, you've got the security aspect already in place. It's a very, you know, heavily trafficked corridor, but the center needs some life to it, so we thought it also starts to attract, you know, tenants that would want to be in the same, you know, building as co-tenancies. A lot of times, you know, some of these first municipalities that started allowing dispensaries, they put them in like their industrial parks, and it's just, you know, they're kind of hidden and tucked away when in reality these facilities, and we can speak to it, but, you know, they're very gorgeous facilities. Especially this operator in particular, one of the, you've got the most proven track record, I think in Illinois, the first one to open up.
In Chicago.
In Chicago. And so their track record speaks for themselves, and it's also about the ability to perform on, you know, and there's licenses that when we first went for last year, like, for the state. My opinion, it's only going to. And so I think. Operations such as that.
I wouldn't say that 59 is the back corner.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just, but just in terms of having the option to have such a good operator, it's a vibrant part of your neighborhood.
Where's specific?
This is my biggest concern, and I just did a simple Google search on lines for dispensaries in Illinois, and this looks really, really crazy. You've got hundreds and hundreds of people lined up outside a dispensary. I don't care if it's short-lived, it's at least the first week or two, and maybe it dies down a little bit, but.
Yeah, I think.
Hundreds and hundreds of people lined up outside these dispensaries, and there's dozens of them. So that's my biggest concern.
I'm interested in that.
I saw them on the news. They were down in Naperville in there.
[inaudible]
Yeah. And I have no idea where those people are parking, but I know not all of them are walking up there.
So we have had a lot of experience, especially in 2020, with huge crowds and having to
deal with them. I would say that our group in particular has a lot of strategies, as well as pre-order, as well as, you know, training staff in order to get customers out the door. We have a very stern mindset in terms of helping people, but making sure that the retail experience is a good one, which also means not waiting a long time. Currently, we can do about 1,100 on Fridays in a square foot area of 800 with virtually no line at all. I mean, I might have a couple.
That's the Lincoln Park location. Do you still have lines out the door?
1,100 on a Friday.
No, we didn't.
So you're telling me there's 1,100 customers there on a Friday?
Yes.
What are you thinking about locating?
[inaudible]
I'm sorry?
There's already a.
I didn't hear.
Have you tried to park in back of Bannerman's when it was there?
Were you thinking about locating?
What?
In the elbow space of the town center, which is, since Chris Riss developed, town center, I bought it in 2012. There's the elbow space, about 37. Yes, 37 hundred square feet. It's right on the, where the building kind of comes in, where the corridor cuts through the building, that vacant space just.
This is where you were going to bring it to us before in March, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you mentioned hidden. St. Charles' location, they do not allow it in downtown area, but their facility is on North Avenue. It's not hidden.
Ray, can you mention 1,100?
Right out there. And I noticed, just as a, who's responsible for what? Are your distilleries responsible for your own security?
I'm sorry?
Are distilleries, I'm sorry, distribution centers, right, dispensaries, are you responsible for your own security?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so, because we referenced our police department there to work with.
No, yeah, when I first took over the leasing for Bartlett Town Center, when Steve kindly hired me to help him out, I was standing out in front, and it just dawned on me that, I was looking at the Metro and looking at the police station, and I actually did another one of these up in Park Ridge, and there's always pushback from the community. It's new business, and so I really find that it's quite an educational process, but I just felt that having the police station across the street would just kind of put some added , you know, people in the community, especially. I just thought it was an additional kind of.
Even if.
Let me ask you, okay? Let's go back, because I'm still not clear. The conversation all changed. Where are you going to locate again?
There's an elbow space.
Right across the, you know, the elbow.
Behind Marco's Pizza.
Yeah, behind Marco's Pizza.
Or next to Arton Park. But even if we removed the.
Got you. Now, it's, and your hours, your hours, that'd be right on Main Street, correct? Marco's Pizza, that elbow, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about 1,000 people that came through there on a Friday, and we're looking at, based on the average you gave us, 33 cars per hour will be going through there?
So 1,000 people on Friday.
So 400, and they're going to be open 12 hours, so that's 33.
It's a much more dense location than you was referring to. 1,000 people, it's definitely west loop, it's very, you know, much more dense area. And I think Zach Zeises, who was here initially when we first met with the board, he was more than confident that, you know, there might be an initial drum up just because it's going to be the first.
Well, gentlemen, I'm going to tell you, I came in here with a very open mind, and I looked at the plan, I looked at everything we've talked about. I've discussed this with some of the people that are here on the board, and when we start talking about the volume of people that are there in the location, you know, I've just got a bad taste in my mouth about this right now. I'm sorry to say.
Do you have numbers for like?
We never discussed anything about 1,100 or 1,000 people.
Well, I just heard it this evening.
I mean, that's in Chicago. Your police commander addressed these security questions?
Not security, we're talking about traffic.
Correct.
Yeah. And I have honestly had a hard time parking at Bannerman's on a regular Friday night.
You have a parking lot in the rear, Mr. President, that can accommodate any number of people?
Most of them are.
You have access?
They're reserved for the lot.
You have access to your stores from the rear?
You have to get the padway.
You have to, okay.
You have the padway access that leads to the parking lot.
I think we should also acknowledge that we have an apartment building that still hasn't gone up yet, right? We have a train merger that's going to potentially cause us some issues in the downtown area, and we have another project that we've been discussing that's going to lead, bring a lot of traffic into the downtown too.
You bring up some good points, but right now, we're not talking about a particular site plan. We're just talking whether we're going to prohibit this in the downtown area or the downtown overlay district or not.
I do have some questions for him, though.
Sure.
Something like that. Being that you are selecting the downtown area, does the state still require to have onsite security at all times? Yep. Okay. How do you, in a dense area like this, prohibit your customers from using the product in the parking lot or as they're sitting in their car running? I would like to know how you prohibit that, whether it's here or across town. I want to know how that is, because at this particular location, we have residents above there who, honestly, yes, they would like to see something in that complex here, okay? And I would too, but I have some convictions against, you know, some reservations as well as the amount of traffic. Now, I understand you have an online-based sale, so people are coming, picking up and leaving. So how do you address the parking lot and the smell in any area?
Sure. So we definitely have some of that issue right around our stores, right, where people want to use the product right around the store. Our security guards are constantly, you know, basically going around the entire area. They're actually forced to go to each point and make sure they are securing each area. So if there are people smoking in the, or trying to attempt to smoke in their cars, the security guards would be told to make sure they don't do that, right? Because onsite consumption is not allowed. Also, I wanted to clarify with the 1,100 number, that was how many people we can process in 800 square foot without much of a line at all. I'm not saying that's how many people would come to this location at all. No, that's just after our experience with several years. We are able, we believe our operations, we know how to handle that kind of demand, and also make sure that people are in and out in a quick and efficient manner.
Good. I'm sure you've got some numbers as far as how many you've built your business plan on, right?
Yeah, I think we want, expecting between 200 and 400 in this location.
That's a pretty big gap, 200 and 400.
Yeah, I think between Monday or a Friday, I think maybe it was what.
A day.
I have a question for the village. Do we have like estimates, like put in perspective of how many people go to any, like the downtown bars, or like what we're expecting with more? Like to put in perspective the difference in numbers?
I have a question to ask our attorney. If we vote for the text amendments, and then also if we include that regarding the dispensaries in the downtown overlay districts as part and parcel of that, and we include it all at one, and we say we don't want cannabis dispensaries in the downtown overlay district, it's still a special use, correct? So someone could come back in, and even though it's a special use, petition the board to approve their being.
No, it's not allowed in the downtown area the way the ordinance is written, so it's not a special use. It's a prohibited use by exclusion. If it's not expressly made for permitted use, it's prohibited. So they can't come in, in that area as it's written in the downtown area unless the board adds a provision in the text amendment to.
Well, I would like.
Include it as a permitted use in the downtown overlay district.
Okay, I'm only speaking for myself, okay? I just would like to know if we allow it as a special use, maintain a special use with the text amendments, and delete then dispensaries in the downtown.
I'm confused. So you want to, instead of making it prohibited, you want to make it a special use?
Correct.
In the downtown and permitted or whatever, special use?
With no restriction?
Yeah. The only problem, honestly, a special use by case law is essentially a permitted use. So unless it's somehow more onerous or has more effects than similar uses in similar zone property, it can be allowed, and you may vote down the permitted use, but in litigation, that may not stand.
Right.
So, you know, there isn't as much protection as you think in, or discretion on your part in granting or not granting a special use, to be honest. So.
I personally think the overlay district is too restrictive. However, my opinion was, talking to the board here, and I liked your plan, I think you probably have a great business. I think Bartlett has a lot of other areas that are, in my opinion, a better business decision, but it's not for me to decide. My decision is, my position is, I think the overlay district being 100% restrictive is too much. I personally like to see the B1 district restricted and the PD as adjacent to any B1 district. That is my opinion on it. I personally don't think it's fair to the residents above there to put a marijuana dispensary there. That's my position. I would like, that would be the direction that I would like to see this go, because I also would not want to see it along Railroad Avenue. It's just not the image that I like for a town, so it's just, that's my opinion. And, you know, granted, it's going to bring a lot of business to town, but I just don't.
When we brought this up in March, I think the petition was pulled, right? And then we, staff asked us to take this opportunity to, in the first place, I think, relook at the 1,000 feet restriction, so that we came, we came up in line with what the state was allowing at this time.
Right.
Is that correct? And at that time, we only allowed it in Blue Heron and Brewster Creek, and we decided we would open it up to our other business districts in town. But to your point, we did. But to your point, we didn't, we weren't comfortable at that point with, in the downtown area, the downtown overlay.
There's plenty of good areas in downtown, if a strip mall is built in downtown, or a multi-unit residential-
There's a little bit.
What's that? That doesn't have residential above it, I think it's a better decision for our residents.
But that's what we, I mean, I'm just reviewing what we discussed, right? And I, I thought, I thought everybody was comfortable with that, but, you know, then if you want to parse things down-
My biggest concern is the traffic, my biggest concern is the traffic.
We, we actually, in the West Loop, we actually have residents above our dispensary at that location, um, and, uh, we are very, very good neighbors to them, and so they don't mind being, it's not noisy at a dispensary, it's not like a bar at all. Uh, I, I know you do have concerns with people smoking outside, I assure you, we are very law-abiding, and that is not allowed, right? At a dispensary, actually, that's where you're going to get noticed and kicked out, if you're doing that kind of thing, because we have cameras everywhere, because we're constantly doing that thing. So, actually, these places are kind of, they are visited by a lot of people, right? They are, um, frequented, right? People use cannabis as a medicine, uh, they use it on a daily basis, right, it's no secret, um, but I also think that they're very, um, sort of law-abiding people, right? These are the kind of affluent people that are going not to the underground, they're coming to the legal places to purchase, right?
I totally agree with what you're saying, but it doesn't fix our problem with that many cars going in and out of a small area.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I-
Can you answer a question for me, just out of curiosity, because of your, your mention the smoke thing?
Yeah.
Um, what percentage now of sales do you have that are edibles and non-smoked products versus the actual smoked products?
Uh, it, a lot, and it's growing every year, I'd say, I would say between edible and then, uh, I mean, I don't know if you count vaporization, um, but those two combined are going to be about at least sixty-five percent, you know? Uh, flour, uh, as a whole, which you smoke, is shrinking, uh, overall, although it's obviously very strong because of its, you know, whole medicine nature.
So, President Wallace, they have scrubbers that are built-in environmental scrubbers-
Oh, yeah.
That scrub out the odor, and it's constructed in such a way that it doesn't smell, and they don't permit smoking in there, and each package is for medically sealed.
Yeah.
So, it's not like you're walking around and you could smell it like in the seventies or whatever, they take tremendous care to make sure there is no smell. The average sale is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per customer, so it's an affluent customer, it would go-
Anything else, anything else controlled by the state of Illinois is going to change continually. There used to have to be four maximum video game machines inside of the bartender now, look at all these video machines all over the place now. So, there'll probably eventually be smoke rooms inside of these places where you'll eventually be able to try it on spot, so I don't really put any emphasis- I know, but, uh, you won't need extra permits for that eventually, I would doubt. But, uh, the biggest thing is, is take it over, Chairman.
So, the biggest issue I think we see is, everything's good with this text amendment except for Item C. Item C, we have an issue with, Trustee Gunstein would like to basically go back to the drawing board and carve out some of the downtown overlay district, and have some of the areas that could be a, a good permitted use for this. Um, are we in any rush to bring this to the Village Board for a vote at our next meeting, or can we bring it back at an, another meeting in committee? Would that be acceptable? And talk about Item C?
Isn't, I mean, that's a, I wouldn't have any-
Does anyone have any issue with that, so we can discuss?
I, I think in order to make it easier on these folks so they know what they're doing, um, I'm, I'm not for this being down there just because of the traffic.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry, I think you have a great business, I don't have anything wrong, I don't have any problems with your business, I think it would be very successful, obviously, you've done it downtown. I just can picture in my mind how hard it's going to be for the residents and the other businesses in there when these people start coming in and out, and in and out, and in and out, and in and out, and in and out. That's about, wait, we, we, we have enough, no more comment?
No more comment.
Okay.
I agree with, uh, Trustee Hopkins, and that's what I said earlier, same thing that, uh, hitchhiking off what, uh, Trustee Gunstein said. I think that the downtown area, overlay district is too large, I said that earlier. And I think that we have to really evaluate where, where we think that these would be, uh, properly located in, uh, in lieu of the traffic situation, and number of people alienate that, or separate that from residential, but I'm concerned also, not only about the traffic, and that's what I said, I came in here with an open mind, but the more I'm listening to this, the more, the more, I have a bad taste in my mouth about this location, there's no doubt about it. And also, I think that, uh, we have to be concerned, you know, with the, uh, the amount of traffic there, and segregate that or separate that from residential uses, but that's where I stand.
We have limited parking in our downtown area, right? And that's all in the B one area.
Right.
Okay? The P D, which is the Bartlett Town Center-
Yep.
Is, as much as it looks like there's a lot of parking, and as many buildings as, or as many residents as we have there, it's not, it's not ample parking, okay? If that res, if that retail center was full, there wouldn't be enough parking for the residents. So, for my, and again, my opinion is, is President Wallace's point, that is not a parking problem that we want to put on those residents.
Oh, I agree with him.
Okay, I would have no problem with you having this traffic problem in another area in town, I really don't, because I think it would be situated outside of a residential environment, and the residents do not deserve to not have a parking spot for when their friends come over, and vice versa, when they come home, that's it, that's how I feel about it. So, a low-density use, if you said you were a low-density use, and I'm only talking about this particular location, if you were a low-density use, it'd be a different story, but you're not, you're, you're a high-density use, you're a very popular business right now, very successful business. And I just, unfortunately, I just don't want to put that strain on the residents.
We have to define the, uh, districts where it can go in Staffordland.
Yeah, I think Chris, Christie Stone, if you could.
No, we're not going there, you can stop, I've dealt with that before, we're not going there, okay?
Unless the Impact C can put in a hundred car, um, above ground parking lot.
You'll be in that location, I've heard this before with other developers, you'll be in that location, and now we're responsible for all the people that are living there. You know, I, I'm not going down that road.
All right, we'll send this back to staff to do some further evaluation on the different, uh, neighborhood shopping districts, and kind of maybe carve out certain areas in the downtown overlay.
Do you also want a restriction, um, if it is, you know, we have a number of commercial areas that have apartments above?
Yes.
Do you also want that residential component as well?
Yes, I believe so, if that's our reasoning, I think it definitely should be. Is there any other comments from the committee?
Stephanie, did you have something?
I was just saying, if that's the reason, you have to be consistent.
Yeah, yeah, any other comments? We'll send this back, that's all we have under, uh, planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Trustee, or Chairman Hopkins, I'll understand a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the security and public safety pursuant to Section two C eight of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee's called a roll.
Trustee Danny?
Second right, Trustee Swansky, Danny?
Yes.
Gansey? Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Swansky?
We are adjourned to executive session.